First item is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Make a motion we approve the agenda as presented with one change.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We need to delay the adoption of the snow and ice control policy until the next meeting. According to the town manager, we do.
That is according to the town manager.
Which number is that?
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five. Okay. Everybody clear on that? Anything else? If not, all over the favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If both, motion passes. Next item, approval of minutes. Make a motion we approve the minutes of February twenty-six, twenty-four as presented.
Make a motion we approve the minutes of February twenty-six, twenty-four as presented.
I'll second it.
I said that on February twelve, twenty-four.
I was gonna say.
Which one do you want? The twelve or the?
I said the twelve.
Huh?
I said the twelve.
Said the twelve. All right. Corrections? Joe, you have any questions?
I, I was just, uh, was this the meeting where I was, several of us were trying to get in and we had audio difficulties?
Yes.
Yeah, I know I eventually was able to join the meeting. I guess my question was, um, whether I was present to either approve the agenda or, um, approve the minutes.
Can I interject?
Yeah, sure.
Um, on page two, the second paragraph, it says, Joe Merk, join the meeting at seven twenty-five via phone.
It's four zero on that, so. Right, so the first two votes, which are four zero, I think should be three zero.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Joe?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Just to say, oh, okay.
I'm all set.
All set.
All over the favor, approve the minutes. Corrections, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay. All righty. Moving on now to the sixteen. This is the discussion.
Make a motion we approve the minutes of February sixteen, twenty-four as presented.
I'll second.
You have a second? Corrections, additions?
The only comment I would make is in the second from last paragraph on the first page, approval of New Holland's power repairs. I'm not sure that everybody reading these minutes would know what PTO means, uh, in the second to last line. In fact, I can't remember what PTO means.
Power takeoff.
Power takeoff. Thank you. So I, I, I think it'd be better if we could spell that out.
Okay. Anything else? Don, all over the favor, approve with corrections, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item, citizens' comments and/or concerns, issues not on the agenda. Mary, Mary Drogi?
Mary Drogi?
Yep.
Do you want me to come up?
If you'd like, yes, please.
I just want to say how much I appreciate this opportunity to always ask questions. I know you guys see a lot of me. Um, all my questions are related to the Castleton Village School, and I'm wondering if there's any updates about our negotiations with Hubbardon that you can share.
What I can share is it's with an attorney right now, uh, waiting, we're waiting for word back from an attorney, um, on negotiations with Hubbardon. Um, both their attorney and our attorney have spoken, so we're just, the town's just waiting for a final response.
Okay, awesome. And are there any updates related to the Hail proposal that you can share?
I haven't heard anything since the last time that anything was given. I haven't heard from him in weeks, so.
Weeks.
So I haven't had any, I don't have anything else to update, I guess, or updating on.
Is no change to his original proposal? Okay.
The last thing now I saw was in December, and Zach was gonna reach out to Somer at College about the wrestling program.
And that's happened several times.
And I haven't heard anything since then.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Seems to be more kind of sucking blood than.
Yeah. Okay. Um, uh, it's my understanding that there's, uh, conducting a feasibility study? Do, do, can we find out more about that? I, is that the Rutland Regional Planning Commission grant?
So it was a Vermont Community Development Program, planning grant. We missed the boat on the, um, Rutland Regional Planning Commission one, so there, the, there was an opportunity to apply through Vermont Community Development Program, which I did do that. Um, in the meantime, the town had, um, or the, the board had authorized me to, um, put an RFP out for a feasibility study, and I have one company that's been pursuing that with asking questions, which as of today, we just put responses to questions out on our website. Um, and I extended the, the deadline by three days, so there is no grant approved yet.
Okay.
And, but we do have an RFP out there to solicit the, uh, a feasibility study, so we can get, it'll give us a sense of what it's gonna cost to do on.
Okay.
Because the grant, the grant may not even cover all of it. We don't really know that till we're awarded the grant.
When, when will we know about that grant?
I think they said, I believe it was March.
March, okay.
On the cost.
And the RFP for the feasibility study is for that grant if we get it?
It's for the grant if we get it, or if we don't get the grant, so the select board can review the cost of the feasibility study and decide whether, how they want to move forward.
Okay. And isn't there also, uh, like a heating cooling grant that's like five hundred thousand dollars or something?
It's, the acronym's MERP, which stands for Municipal Energy Resilience Program.
Okay.
So they, they came in, they did the assessment of the building, um, so now it's a waiting game to find out, uh, get the results of that, and the number you threw out was accurate as far as, it's up to five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
With no required match.
Wow.
Um, so we did apply for the, the village school, they did the assessment, and they also did an assessment on the highway garage.
Okay. And when do we expect to hear from, about that?
They're, they didn't give us an exact timeline, but.
They don't tell you, okay.
Um, they're, it's completed.
The, the, everything they need to decide is in, is what you mean by completed. And that's heating and cooling and green retrofitting, kind of?
Uh, it's everything from cold climate heat pumps to, um, lighting, you know, there was energy consumption, fuel, windows, roof, um, and there's another one that just came out from Senator Sanders' office for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that is also this, for almost the same purpose. So I'm gonna parallel, um, apply for that as well, just in case we don't get one, we might get the other.
Okay, awesome. Great. Thank you very much. And my last question, um, is actually, Jim, from your letter, where you stated that regardless of ownership, adequate space must be provided. So I was happy to see that, of course, and you know I'm all for CVS staying in town hands for a rec center. But I was, I was curious if there's a further definition about adequate, 'cause.
You asking me that?
I am asking you that.
I'd be happy to give you an answer. As far as I know, it would have to be something that would be, uh, discussed between the Recreation Commission and the town, if the town continues to own it, or if there's a private, uh, party that ends up acquiring the building, it would be discussion between the private party and the Recreation Commission.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Yes.
That, that word adequate, uh, today, when I responded to the, uh, the questions for the RFP, I did state in there, the term adequate in quotes has not been yet determined, so they knew that.
Okay. Okay. I'm just harking back to that discussion we had at the beginning of Hale's proposal, where the rec commission came up with what we thought was adequate, and my understanding is that the select board decided something else was adequate, which was much less, yeah?
No, that did not happen.
Okay.
Zach came up, Zach Hale came up with what he thought was adequate, the Recreation Commission came up with they thought was adequate, and naturally, there was a difference between the two.
Of course.
And I don't think it, I don't think it moved beyond that, like, did it?
It really didn't move be, there was no more, there was no movement of the, of the lines.
Okay. So in the future, will the select board, um, accept the recommendation by the rec director and the rec commission as to what's adequate?
Depends on what it is.
Okay. All right, you answered my question.
Yeah.
All right, well, it's a very vague term. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else here who wishes to address the board?
There's nobody on Zoom.
Ask me around the podium there in a couple places. Anybody, if, no, anyone else on Zoom who wishes to address the board?
It's just Allison, so.
Allison, do you wish to address the board?
Well, thank you, I'm all set.
Okay. I guess not. Okay. Uh, if not, we'll move on to police update. Chief? Chief, in board.
Good evening.
Couple things going over. Uh, you all got a copy of the January twenty twenty-four monthly report, correct?
Yes.
So, uh, as I went through this, uh, when Justin got it out for me, um, I didn't see anything in there that was riveting, uh, no major increases or decreases, really, it's kinda even. Um, I think in Jan, well, in January, we did, um, seventeen less calls from six twenty-nine to six twelve. Um, any questions on the service calls?
One, what was the explosion called?
Uh, let's see, which one's that on?
Oh. It's the first time I've seen that, thought it was ticked.
No, it's been, it's been ticked before. We had the, uh, the River Street explosion.
Well, I remember that one, no.
I, I believe this is the one from the quarry.
Okay.
And nothing came out of it, just, it was loud.
Last month?
Yes.
I've heard a couple of them.
Yep.
Usually hear the whistle's going all that in the front.
We haven't, uh, I, I will touch on that, so the residents in that area for that safety zone area that, uh, when they came up two years ago and they figured out the zoning, uh, the houses, residents within the, what they call the blast area, um, I've received a few complaints or notifications of some, um, of the, of the explosions being a little loud. Um, I've been keeping track of that. There's no debris that I know of that was ever reported, thing like that, it's noise. Okay, any other questions on, you had your?
Yeah, I, I, uh.
Yes.
I wanted to ask about the first item, chief, abandoned vehicles. Is that the car that's on East Hubbardon Road just?
No, actually, that's for February. Now, we did have it, we actually, last Friday, I had three of them on the road. So that one, what we do is we, because that's off a travel portion of the road, we give it, we, we apply the state law for seventy-two hour abandonment, and I actually reached it today, but I'll probably deal with it tomorrow morning. We'll just get it moved, consider it abandoned for, because it's been there for seventy-two hours since, actually, late Thursday night. So the, this one here was another vehicle, I'm not sure which one it was, uh, that, oh, I know what that one was, that was the one that we had in exit five parking ride.
Okay. And, uh, in, in the, uh, listing for noise disturbance, which didn't have any, uh, concerns last month, leads me to ask, have we now put our noise ordinance into place and communicated?
So, yeah, so I have had several people reach out to me, I'm gonna probably schedule a March meeting, I'll talk with the town manager about it, but I'm gonna do like a, um, a residential meeting, uh, whether it be here, or I'll do it at the, the senior center, I haven't figured out what, um, I want to address it, kinda go over the ordinance, um, show them the, the meter, uh, the noise meter that we're gonna have, and answer questions, really. Some businesses have talked about it, people from the, the lodge have reached out to me, some of the residents on Pine Street wanna know really what that means. Had a lady leave me a message, uh, she didn't leave her name, so I don't really know who that person was, um, and referenced that also, so.
But I assume no petition was filed since we posted that?
No.
No?
No, I haven't really heard, other than the people that, uh, reached out to me. Um, yeah, probably because of January, too, the, the university was on break, so we probably didn't have a whole lot going on there. Any other questions on the service calls? All right, so, come to the rest, uh, we had seven last month, uh, down a little bit from eleven. Nothing really stands out there, although we have in, we've seen a progression of DUIs, actually. Um, I know in the notes in the back that, uh, they had one, it was a one-way, uh, wrong way driver on Route Four, which was ugly, could've been ugly, traveling west in the eastbound lane, and Justin and, um, uh, Nodj, uh, were able to get the vehicle stopped without any damage or anything. So I don't know what that, what's going on there with why DUIs are up this year. Uh, traffic violations, as you can see, you know, wintertime, um, even though the snow hasn't been too bad, but we have had, and they may not show it in January, I wanna go back to, yeah, the accident property damage, if you go to the very first page, uh, you know, we're averaging over ten a month, it's just, and it's, some of it's on dry pavement, so I, some of it's in attentiveness, sometimes people aren't paying attention, falling too close, uh, I had one recently at the Four Corners where person's foot slipped off the brake and back ended somebody, um, so it's just a various, various reasons why we, we've, why that's increased. Any questions on those items? Calls for service, Castleton, uh, we just had two in January, uh, one was a medical emergency, and the other one is suspicious person. Medical emergency usually relates to somebody having some type of, obviously, a medical event at the university. Backup, we've been averaging, you know, we had nine last month, January, we had seven. As you can see, we, we had two in Poltonee, we had two in Hubbardon. The two in Poltonee, I think one of those was VSP, the other one was the Sheriff's Department. Hubbardon was, uh, one of those was mine where, um, they wanted me to, they asked me if I could dispatch a deer that got hit off by, um, Hotonia Road and Route Thirty. So I did that for them, the Fish and Wildlife had asked me about it.
What do you, what do you do in that case? What do you, you went up and just dragged a deer off the road, is that?
No, the deer was, was still alive, was off the road, there was a person right there wanted the deer, so I actually worked out pretty good. Um, I just, uh, dispatched the deer and gave them a case number, had contacted dispatch, let the, the warden know that, uh, who the person was, and they took the deer. It's a good doe, actually, it would've been a good one to get, because it really just got clipped.
End of story right there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep. Um, going on to the last page, still doing the, the stuff that we've been working on. Talked about the DUIs, uh, I do have Nodj, he was, who started the academy in the first week in February, although wouldn't show in January, so he's gonna be there till end of May. He's in the residential program, he's doing well. Um, he's already a class leader, so I, I told him, I said I wouldn't expect anything but, so. He laughed, and I said, yeah, you'll laugh, too. Um, I talked about, um, the noise ordinance, which I will schedule that, and I'll talk to Mike about it, and I'll put it out through social media, and hopefully, we'll get some people to question about that. I also have handed you, this is something that Dick had, had asked about it, I don't know, a couple months ago, maybe a month ago, on getting some updated quotes of those speed limit digital displays with lights. So the, these are the three biggest ones that, if you got, we got the Dana Safety Supply, we got the Stalker Radar, which they do a lot, and of course, the Customs. And if you look on them, you'll see the total for each of those, for four of them, so basically geared for four, so anything that's, that's coming into the town, Route Thirty, North, South, four A, East, West, and that's how I kinda, that's why I wanted him to get me four of those, 'cause I know we talked about that. So these are ones that amounted, uh, with solar, um, you know, they're pretty expensive, but they're worth it, if you, if you have the money and wanna invest in it, they're permanent. Um, as you can see, the costs, you know, they average anywhere from, you know, almost five thousand to like forty-five hundred, something like that. The one on Customs, it's, I think that's the most expensive one, and I think Dana has, has the one, but it's also got the blue, blue and red lights, which I'm not sure that Custom has both of those. And these are mounted on poles.
What's the maintenance like on most, chief?
I, you know that I don't know, I probably should find that out, what it, I, I know that, um, sometimes when I go home on four A, I'll go buy the restaurant one. I know they've replaced that solar panel probably, since I've been here almost ten years, probably like twice. I know, I, I know I've seen that happen, 'cause it didn't work for a period of time and they replaced the, um, and then some of the, the lighting and the digits, digits reading out, I know that they replaced some of those, so I don't know, but I can, I can find out what that may be, what the cost may be.
Reading would be an estimate.
Yep. So this is just for information, this is just something I just wanted to get back. Um, right now, uh, there's not a grant that I have found that would cover this at this point, but I'm sure there's something out there.
Did they come up on time, chief?
Yep, yeah. We had that one, we didn't get last year, we tried to get it. So that's something, maybe I'll reach out to the Rutland County, uh, Planning Commission, see, 'cause they, they have a grant writer that's pretty, that watches these more than probably we do, I'm gonna probably reach out to him or her and to see if, if they've seen anything.
Appreciate the research.
Yep.
What we're looking at, which is roughly five K a piece.
So normally for quotes, we can hold them up to six months. So if it's something comes up, we'll still utilize these, most grants, three to six month period, they want something relatively new, but six months being oldest, so I think that if we can find something, six months, see if there's anything out there, and then go for it, and I'll let you, I'll let y'all know.
Appreciate you.
Yep. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, annual certification of highway mileage. I believe we have that in our packet. Is there a motion?
I'm not sure exactly what we have to do here, so, or what the verbage should be, so I will, uh, make a motion that we approve and accept the certificate of highway mileage for the year ending February tenth, twenty twenty-four as presented.
I'll second it.
And a second, discussion. Seeing none, all over the favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Is there something in your packet?
It should be an original and be older.
Who seconded that one?
Bob did.
All right, thank you.
Signatures of select men, aldermen, or trustees. Not a singular, it's plural.
I think that makes Mary Lee a trustee.
That's right.
They need to change the verbs. Cause you are a person, correct? Not speaking to you.
I am a person.
Right below my name there, girl.
I'll look for the document for that.
That's what you do, please?
Thank you. The, uh, library. Let me see the papers in here. Oh, maybe there's no warrant.
Yeah, I just don't see the.
No. I know I forwarded you guys stuff by email, but.
Thank you, Jim.
Unless he put it in, just in the warrant. Yeah, it's right there.
Next item is the approval of liquor licenses. Tennessee Second Class liquor license, Tennybrook Tobacco license, Tennybrook Tobacco substitute endorsement, Global Marvellous Group DBA Jiffy Murk, tobacco or substitute endorsement. According to the chief, there's no problem with any of these. I'll make a motion that we approve all four licenses as presented by the chairman. Okay, sir?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
I just got a question.
Sure.
What, what is Tennybrook, where is that? Is that?
It's the mobile.
The mobile, yeah.
Down here on the left. Yeah, but, okay. Okay.
If not, all over the favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion back. I don't see any place out here.
We don't sign those anywhere, though.
Thank you very much.
I checked with Senator on that, and, uh.
Okay, we'll move on. Approval of dispersment of VCDP program funds to Castle Free Library. Mike?
Can we move that down further in there, 'cause there's no paperwork in your packet that I can, I don't have it in line, so I need to get the amount.
Okay.
I think, 'cause it's, all you're doing is releasing the payment from our bank to, into the library's funds, um, but I, I think you should probably have the amount, so I can look it up if you can move farther down into the.
Okay, all right. Financing of the new plow truck through M and T Bank, I believe we've had that in our packet, I believe the interest rate was five point two five?
Um, well, there's a, there's more to it, there's more to it, yeah, if I could speak on that.
Yeah, sure.
So as of today, um, the board, well, not as of today, well, as of today, I found out that the Freightliner, uh, we can't, we, they don't have any more spots to order it for this year, so that's a no-go, we'd have to wait till next year. So I talked to our, our Charlie Boys, Sandy Lad, today, and we can get in the queue, the build schedule for the Western Star, which was more money, but it's in like the October to January timeframe that, um, we would receive the cabin chassis, and I would have to go to Viking, um, after that for the plow package. If we wait and we don't do anything, and you say, let's wait till next year for the Freightliner, we don't know how much it's gonna, the increase is gonna be both to the truck, and we don't know what the increase will be to the plow package. So what I'm asking the board to do, it, what I handed out to you was the M and T Bank schedule shows what the payment is, it's forty-five thousand and some odd, um, it fits within, or still fits within our, our budget of what we budget for that truck, but it's gonna increase, it's gonna change the, the manufacturer from Freightliner to Western Star, it increases the price, so I would need the board to rescind the previous motion, or however you wanna go about, uh, dumping that one and go into a new, go into a new motion for the Western Star. And so I provided a copy of the bank stuff, you could see that, and I also, um, brought my packet from last month that has the amounts for the Western Star, if you don't already have that. So I don't know if that made sense to you, but, uh, I can try English if you want me to reiterate it.
I just have one question, Mike.
Yep.
Does this dollar amount here, does this already reflect the five thousand dollar savings that the dealership is gonna give us?
No.
It does not.
So I'll, I'll explain that to you, if, if you want me to do that now. Just so.
Go ahead.
So the, the base amounts that were on, that you saw, the, it was two seventy-nine, um, originally, for the, one, like, let me, let me get my stuff out so I don't misspeak, but the total amount now is two seventy-six, two eighty, for, um, that includes the warranty, um, seven-year warranty, um, and if we pay, so this whole five thousand dollar thing comes in, is if we pay for the cabin chassis, when it comes into our, our Charlie Boys, and before it goes to Viking, we'll pay five thousand dollars less for the truck. So I would need the board. But the total amount now is 276, 280. For, that includes the warranty, seven-year warranty. And if we pay, so this whole $5,000 thing comes in, is if we pay for the cabin chassis, when it comes into our Charlie Boys, and before it goes to Viking, we'll pay $5,000 less for the truck. So I would need the board to approve again, is this would have to come out of our reserve fund. We pay for it upfront, and then when we get the loan, which they just got to go through the processing part of it, it would just replenish, we replenish what we took out of our, out of our reserves. But that's how we, that's how we're going to get the $5,000 off on the truck.
Do we have that much in our reserve, highway reserve fund?
It's out of the reserves, not out of the highway reserves. There's only, there's like $51,000 in the highway reserves. But there's 2 million in the other one.
Just so I'm clear.
Yep.
This 276 already includes the 5,000 savings?
If you would give me a moment, I will look at the.
Yeah, you said that.
I have it from the last meeting. Western Star. We did this math today, but I'm going to grind this sausage out because I just lost my pen. So the truck itself was 175, 930, right? So if we take $5,000 off that, we get what's 17930. Following so far? So 170, 17930. And then the plow package is 105,350. So it's 276, 276,280 dollars is what we would be paying for that truck. Okay, and that number matches what we came up with earlier today. And that was with the seven, the seven-year warranty. And the seven-year warranty did not include the axles. But talking with Sandy Lad today, it's $400. But if we had to replace an axle, it's going to be more than 400, so it made sense to add the axles in there. And he said that instead of having to mess up the paperwork, he'd include the axles in the warranty at no cost. So we're, so I'm looking for a motion from the select board to finance lease from M&amp;T Bank, agreed to a lease payment, coming from our reserves. Hold on, let me write this down because this is going to get confusing. Because what we're looking for from the reserves is 170,930, cabin chassis.
Before we get our loan.
Right. And then we get the loan for 276, 280. We pay back the 17930, and all that's remaining to pay is the 105,350 to Viking for the plow package. It'd be all including the loan, loan amount.
Do you need that reserve amount in the motion?
Well, we should probably start by rescinding.
Why do I have to stop right here?
Stop by rescinding.
Right.
That's my plan. So how much do we need to take out of reserve?
170,930 dollars. For the cabin chassis from our Charlie Boys. That, or that's what we're being paid to.
Want to take a stab? Alright, I'm going to make a motion to rescind my motion of February 16th, authorizing the town manager to purchase a 2025 Freightliner. And present a motion to, my second part of my motion is to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with Charlie Boys to purchase a.
New Western Star?
No.
Western Star and Viking package for a tandem axle dump truck for a price of 276,280 dollars. 170,930 dollars of which will be originally, initially taken out of the reserve account to pay for the cabin chassis when delivered, prior to the bank providing the funds to reimburse the reserve account from M&amp;T Bank. I don't know, did that come out right?
For the loan, the total loan amount, for everything.
I'd recommend that we treat the loan as a separate motion.
Okay. So let me rescind all that and start over. I'm waiting to make a motion that we withdraw my motion to authorize the town manager to buy a 2025 Freightliner from the February 16th meeting, and authorize the town manager to purchase a new Western Star with Viking package, plow package for 276,280 dollars.
From?
From Charlie Boys.
Second. Second.
Is there any discussion on that? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm just going to abstain, just to make things clean.
It's okay. Now we move on to the next motion. Or Joe has that one.
Well, I would move that we authorize the town manager to contract with M&amp;T Bank for a loan, I hope I get this right, of 276,280 dollars for a seven-year term at a rate of 5.277%.
Can you second?
I'll second it.
Second. Discussion. Do we need to include in that motion the use of the reserve accounts? Should that be a third motion?
Probably a third one.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, I'm going to abstain.
Yeah.
Pardon abstaining, Allison. Okay, do we need another motion?
Any questions?
Yes, Allison.
Should my motion say what the loan is for?
I don't think it's necessary. And what is the amount that we're taking out of the reserve account?
170,930.
Well, I would also move that related to the purchase of the Western Star truck with Viking package, we approve the use of 170,930 dollars of our reserve accounts, with the understanding that once cash is transferred from M&amp;T Bank for the loan we have previously approved, the reserve account is made whole.
I'll second that. Okay, discussion. If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Say it again, Jim.
You can do that.
I'm going to do that.
Thank you, board.
Okay, moving on. Managers' reports.
We're already to that point?
We are.
Oh, we didn't, well, we didn't, I still don't have the number for the bank. Maybe it's not needed. What they're asking for there is the town received today the money from the VDCP grant for the library's handicap accessibility project. So that, we have 10 days by law to transfer that money from our account into the library's account, library's account. So that's where we're at right now. We received it today. They want to obviously draw on this money. So the board needs authorized to release the payment from Vermont Community Development Program into our account, release it to the, to the library's account for that handicap accessibility project.
For the manager's recommendation, is there a motion? Somebody wants to make a motion to that. Joe?
Well, I guess I have a question related to the motion. Are you recommending that we transfer the entire amount that was sent to the town from VDCP?
That, my understanding is that's the amount they requested, that's the amount we have to release.
I see.
Within 10 days.
So I would move that the board authorize the town manager to transfer funds received from the Vermont Community Development Program in support of the library's handicap access program to the library's accounts.
I'd like to second that.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you.
You'll let us know what the amount is, Mike.
I will, yeah, because I don't have it handy right now.
Yeah.
Okay, now Mike. Managers' report.
Oh, great. Well, barring your questions.
You can just defer to your written submission.
Yeah, I know, I, well, I send you a lot of emails too. Alright.
Got a lot of stuff yellowed, so.
Yeah, you know, some of, we'll go through it. I think the, one of the takeaways I hope to get out of tonight is there's a lot of stuff in yellow on here that deals with the board's decision to use ARPA funds for things that are on that proposal sheet. And we haven't really had much discussion on it and whether, because what I'm concerned about is those things that are, like the project for the sidewalks in the village and the salt and sand shed. Things that could take a long time for it to go through design and construction. And we get to December 31st of 2026, the project's not done, and we committed hundreds of thousands of dollars of ARPA funds, and we can't expend, it goes away. If we don't spend it by that date, if we don't obligate it by December of 31st of this year, that's the first timetable that we have to really meet. But if you don't, I'm thinking like the, there was stuff in there, shortfalls for the, for the sidewalk project. And so not, I'm not saying it has to be done tonight, obviously, but it's something that should be discussed about what your priorities would be for the remaining use of the ARPA funds. Because if we don't have those funds for that thing, like 1.2 million dollars for that sidewalk project, and we can't come up with our share of it, that's on a scale of good to bad, it's like bad. So that's what I'm looking for, is the board to have an open discussion about that stuff. And maybe, I was hoping we could do it before there possibly is a board change, because most people here obviously understand what's been going on.
What's our share?
What's that?
What is our share?
It's on that sheet, I don't, off the top of my head, 20%? Yeah, but it's of one point, 2 million.
But that's for, here on the project, I'm drawing a blank, it just went out my window. Parsons Hill?
Yep.
But you incorporated the towns, you incorporated them together. You probably had to do that.
I missed what you're saying.
You're asking for ARPA funds, but you incorporated both projects together instead of just dealing with one.
No, there, on this sheet, there's Parsons Hills is one number, Main Street's another number, so.
Yeah, but you, you put incorporate in one article, you asked, you didn't separate it. The way I read it, you didn't separate it. Were you devoted for both of them, or you don't vote for either one?
No, if you got, it'd be off this sheet, Bob, I think is the best way to look at them.
So you are going to separate them?
Yeah, we'd have to, because they're two different projects.
Okay, that's not the way I read it on your manager report, that's all.
It's, what the problem is, is there's two different types of grants. Small-scale bike and pedestrian grant, which is the 50% match for us.
Yep.
And you can't count engineering. That's, there's no reimbursement for engineering, or no, no map. It's 100% for us, basically.
Okay.
So to get the, the project done on Parsons Hills, that's a small-scale bike and ped grant, so we need 50% of that project cost. The South Street one, one from the university to Main Street, is also a small-scale bike and ped grant. That's another 50%, so that's, that's in here too.
Okay.
Then you get to the Main Street one, the large 1.2 million dollar one, and that is the 20%, and that, this is a lot of money, it's 20% of 1.2 million. So if we don't have all this money set aside, when those projects come due to pay for them, we're not going to get them done.
So you mentioned two ways in which we could have problems in these projects. One is if we didn't have enough money for our match.
Yep.
And the other is if we allocated ARPA funds, but we didn't get the project completed by the 2026 deadline.
Correct.
On Parsons Hill, what's the likelihood of not getting it completed by the deadline?
Unlikely. Unlikely that we would not get it done. That's, that's one that wants to go out for bid this spring.
That one is ready to go out to bid now, correct?
I'm waiting on, one, I talked to Dan Manette from Fussin' O'Neil. They owe me two different proposals. One is for Parsons Hills, and one's for the South Street to be the municipal project manager for those projects, and be here and making sure people are doing what they say they're. Because we ran into a lot of problems with the last two contracts without having, you know, somebody out there being our eyes and ears. Don't ask, if you ask me to do it, I, I know nothing about concrete pressures and, you know, so it's just, it's better to hire someone like we did, Fussin' O'Neil, and VHB is another one that we used. So those, those two are going to be the easy projects. The 1.2 million dollar Main Street one is going to be the one that's going to push us into the future. Pushing up against that December 31st of 2026.
So you said they could go out to bid this spring?
Yes.
When would they begin construction?
This year.
It would be this summer?
Yes.
They would do it that quick? They're not going to say, oh, we're too busy, we're not going to do it till.
Well, we're going to put it out to contractors and.
We're at their mercy.
They're small projects, so they're not, like, big ones like the last two that we did, so.
Okay.
Specifically, you're talking about the Parsons Hill project as one, and a separate project is the south of Campus to Main Street?
Correct.
On South Street?
Yep.
It has nothing to do with the Main Street project?
Nothing. And I want to go back and the notes that I put in the, in my report, probably break it down a little, talking about what we need, and same with this right here, I'll look at the notes.
Both of those projects can go out to bid this year? I know the Parsons Hill one can.
Parsons Hills can. I talked, when I talked to Dan Manette today, the plans that were done for South Street still need to be completed, and the easements need to be resent out.
So it's possible that could be delayed.
That could be delayed into the spring of '25. But definitely not a large or a small project. So if we get all that stuff done, I feel comfortable saying that that would be a project that would be completed in the spring of, spring, summer of 2025. And I'm trying to read the notes here that I put in the, on the, this right, this sheet right here, the orange or pinkish color. Parsons Hills, use ARPA to provide relief to sidewalk budget because the town share of the project is $92,000, plus the NPM. I recommend, I recommend the board keep the money in the highway carryover for sidewalks and use it towards the town's 302,400 share of the large-scale bike and pedestrian accessibility grant and the town, that the town was awarded for 1.2 million dollars. Because that money does not have time constraints attached to it. So I guess if you, and you read the, the South Street to Main Street, it's the same concept. So use ARPA to cover those shares and keep the money in the highway carryover because it doesn't sunset. Does that make sense or no?
Yeah. You're looking for $239,000 for those two projects?
That is correct.
Well, we must have touched on this eight or 10 times over the last half year. So I'm prepared to make a motion related to that. I would move that we allocate $124,000 of our ARPA funds for the Parsons Hill sidewalk project. And in addition, that I would recommend, or I move that we allocate $115,000 of our ARPA allotment for sidewalks between South Street.
On South Street between the campus and the Main Street.
Thank you. On South Street between the campus and Main Street.
I will second that motion. Please question.
Have we reached out to the college to see if they would donate towards the South Street sidewalk?
Last time I talked to them, Bob, not recently, I talked to them about the crosswalks and the, and the signals, and they were willing to work with us on that part of it. So the, they put some signals in there for both pedestrians and motorists. And take, we're talking about stamping the crosswalks into there. So they said they were willing to go that route, but not the sidewalks. But we didn't even have a discussion about. So they said they were willing to go that route, but not the sidewalks. We didn't even have a discussion about sidewalks.
Well, that was one of my other questions, and I noticed they haven't put up the flashing lights for the crosswalks, and we talked about that a year or two ago.
This project's gonna have multiple layers to it, and that's when we incorporate the new stuff into it.
Okay, okay.
Other questions? How do you plan to finance sewer extensions, Mike?
Right now, if everything held true with the sewer extensions, I don't know, we're going into sewer now, I don't know if you wanna wait on that one, or you wanna keep going?
I wanna see how much money is left.
Oh, okay. So the sewer extensions were still come out of the reserves, and I'm still looking at $823,290 in the wastewater reserve account, and then in July, I don't have it front of me, but I believe it's $100,000 more is gonna go in there.
You said 823?
823, 290. And so there'll be another $100,000 that goes in there, and if everything holds true with what's been put out by the board is, if there's, on these extensions, there's gonna be some matching or contributions, I should say, from those that would benefit from it. So you're not gonna deplete all of that reserve, because if you remember what the Crystal Heights one just came back at, I shared it with you last meeting, like $671,000, I believe is what they were saying. I'm still shocked by that number. I'd like to find out if there's a better way of doing it, or a cheaper, more inexpensive way of doing it. But that's a lot of money. It went from like 300 and something thousand to, or 400,000 to 671,000. The one for Depot Terrace really didn't change much, so it's a little over $200,000. So, with what was said about the contributions, you wouldn't deplete it. You could still pay for it out of sewer reserve without depleting the sewer reserve.
About Creek Road?
That Creek Road is a, that's the one that's out in the limbo land right now, because we don't even have a number.
You don't have a number, okay.
One of, I just, I received a notification from the Vermont Bond Bank saying, "Congratulations on your $249,000 award." And I was like, what the hell are we talking, I don't even know what we're talking about. So, after having to reverse engineer this, it's something, like two years ago, when we didn't, we weren't gonna use the full 2.5 million dollar bond capacity, I said, "Can we use the remaining capacity to upgrade our, one of our pump stations, or expand sewer?" And the answer was, "Yes." Well, somewhere along the way, they said, "He's applying," and they just, they awarded it, so we got, there's $249,000 that's there, and I'm, I'm working with Joe to come up with, what did we take out of our pocket for this project? What's a total amount? Because if we did, and we used a sewer reserve for that, it's not reflecting in, on this, our reserve sheet, and I wanna make sure that there's not an error there, that we didn't take it out, and then we find out there's not 823, there's less than that. But we have now $249,000 that could make that up, or possibly could be used for sewer extensions, or pump station upgrades, so.
But that's a loan?
It is, it is, it's a loan, and it falls under that, one year from substantial completion, if it qualifies, it's, 50% of it's forgiven. So our bond payment, or what we're paying back right now is on 1.2 something million dollars. Is what, that's what our payment's based on, even though the cost of the project was 2.3 million dollars.
Do you feel there will be adequate funds in the reserve for the sewer extensions?
I do, for those two that we just talked about. The third one, I don't have a number yet to even try to give you a guess of what that's gonna cost. And that's if you're talking Creek Road.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, I know, I spoke to Wayne Elliott from Aldridge and Elliott, who's doing that, heading it up, spearheading it, to get them down here, when the weather's good, to do their site, their site plan, or site visit, like they did with Depot Terrace and.
Tomorrow, Wednesday, I'd be good for that.
Yeah, next week, 60 degrees, bathing suit, but. So if I can get them down here to do that, you know, relatively soon, I can give you a number, but.
Okay.
One of the things the board hasn't authorized me to do is enter into an agreement with anybody, whereas you did for Depot Terrace and for Crystal Heights.
Could it be possible that you could survey people, businesses and individuals, and just to see if they would be interested in that?
On the Creek Roads one?
To do that, you're gonna have to come up with some figures as to what it would cost people to connect.
That's what everybody asks me, what's the cost, and without having that figure from the engineers, I, and I'm even not trusting of those numbers, because we see what's happened. Once they get out there, they say, a year ago, they said it's gonna be this amount, and then you get out there, and the true numbers come in, and they're much higher. But I can certainly create a mailer that I can get the addresses there and send out things.
Well, yeah, and if you come up with some figures as to exactly, not exactly, but estimate as to, someone has to connect, and they connect with a gravity line, as opposed to connecting with a pump station. And then, I think we talked about, the individuals who benefit would be paying 50% of the total cost of the trunk line. You gotta come up with a, gotta come up with a total figure somewhere, so that people will have a realistic idea of what it will cost them.
Yeah, over a five-year period, because after that was put out, I did receive phone calls or responses to, on my, to my email on, like, what is this gonna cost us?
Sure.
Although it was for Crystal Heights. But I did realize quickly that the price of putting in these pump stations, these smaller pump stations are cheaper than gravity lines in those areas where it's, they have to go deep into the ground to get that pitch required to get it back to our, you know, like, like Depot Terrace, it was, for Brown's Auto Salvage, they're on the low point, have to go to another low point, but in between there's that, the road's higher. So, I mean, that thing would be down in the ground quite a ways, so that's why it was so much cheaper to go with the pump station, by a lot. I mean, almost, not quite double, but close.
The question down there was the Forest Main, right?
Yeah.
The Forest Main.
Just a small line, like, two-inch line.
Two or three-inch line. If there's a Forest Main, I believe it was a two-inch line, if there was a Forest Main, would individuals who were on Depot Terrace be able to connect at some future date? Even with a pump station?
They have, that was the one where they just couldn't connect in and have it gravity, it'd have to.
Into the Forest Main?
Yeah, they'd have to be pumped from there down to where the pump station is back, because the pump station would be down at Brown's Auto Salvage.
Well, I think those are all things that have to be considered. What I don't wanna see us do is continue to allocate funds, ARPA funds, and not have money available for reasonable sewer extensions where property owners have agreed they would pay 50% of the cost of the trunk lines.
Well, if you look at this list, Jim, there's things on there that, you know, the board may not agree with. You know, so if you start taking some of those off the table, like, I put $75,000 in there for paving. You know, and.
That won't pay much?
No, it doesn't pay much at all, it just kinda, it kinda augments what we have, but the storm drain systems, it's 90,000. I'm hoping that I can convince the board here that the storm drain systems, there's a huge problem in the village that we've got to address, we just, we've kicked the can down the road, and the problems aren't getting better, they're getting worse. So if we don't look at that grant to fix those storm drains down there, I mean, we can continue to have these problems get worse, and that 90,000 is, that's my guess. I haven't even seen, I haven't even put an application in, so I don't even know what the project's gonna come back at. But I put that as 450,000, is 20%.
But don't we also have the possibility of some sizable expenditure, expenses having to do with repairing the Crystal Haven?
Sure looks like it. Yeah, we, you know, we know the line, the lines are good. If we, as the town, require the homeowners to fix the private lines, and we don't keep fixing those, that reduces cost, right? It's the manholes that haven't been opened up for, I don't even know how long. Jeff's been here 12 years, and they've never been opened up. So they open them up, and they're like, oh, well, we're looking at something that hasn't been opened up in 12-plus years, and we're starting to add stuff to plans that don't show up on plans. And so, as we open up these manholes, we may find more and more issues that we have to address. The ones that run along the railroad tracks, they've never, they haven't been opened, so I don't even know when. Jeff didn't even know they were down there. So, we have some inspections to do, and that's why this camera and that company, Greenmount Pipeline, provides, they actually filmed everything, and they took pictures, and they're gonna come back to the board, and they're gonna have a product that we can look at, and with their recommendations. So we'll be able to see kind of what shape we're in, across pump stations, manholes, and actual sewer lines. But to give you peace of mind, the one that we were told was an issue underneath Route 4, or the Four Corners, they camered that thing and didn't find anything, any breaks in it.
Well, it says that there are pipes leaking, right?
Yeah, that's what we were told, but we never saw them, but they couldn't find anything to indicate a break in a line that would cause a leak.
You're talking about the Route 30?
The gravity, that gravity line that runs, so the Forest Main comes up from the river, that was filled, that's a 12-inch line, six inches of sediment in that line. So they flushed that all back out, so that's cleaned out. They found one compromised area at Patricia Lane, which we knew about, because that got dug up like four years ago. That, and then, but the rest of the line is in good shape. And they camered the line and washed out the line underneath, the gravity line underneath the Four Corners, and said, they couldn't find any indication of a leak or break or anything.
So am I, we talking about two different areas?
Yeah, that was like, that was back, no, that's the right area. This was back when, can I read that again, though? I'll make sure I'm not talking about Patricia Lane. That's, that was, that should have been, that was in the Forest Main coming up from the, by Patricia Lane, but the gravity line underneath the Four Corners, they said they didn't find no indication of it leaking. And what was happening before was asbestos concrete, and the hydrogen sulfide was dissolving the top of the line, and it's not. Now, if they put high pressure to it, is it crumbling? They couldn't tell that by looking at it.
So you'll be coming back to us with recommendations on Crystal Haven?
Correct. And they're doing Crystal, the line that comes off from Crystal Heights, that Frank Taggart put in, that line there, they're checking all that too, to make sure there's nothing wrong, because that's all gonna be, could be part of that expansion. They're trying not to. I guess what they're trying to do is go short of that and come out to Route 30.
So, we've recently invested a lot in software for asset management. Is that going to ensure that we don't go more than 12 years before checking a manhole?
If we do everything that we should be doing as human beings, that program will be extremely helpful, because we can capture all the services that have been in there, when it got happened, what the status was, what we did, what the cost was. Yes, the answer to your question, that was the intent of that, of those programs.
Great.
Any other questions for Mike? Well, I just wanna get back to the sidewalk, because if we authorize this 239,000 out of ARPA for these two projects, that will make those projects halt, in your opinion?
Correct.
Okay. And that would still, because we have 1.349 million total in ARPA funds.
Yep.
And we have allocated 606 so far, the balance is 739.
Correct.
And this just happens to be 239K between these two sidewalks projects.
You're down to 500.
So that would be 500,000 we have not allocated. So it'll still be 500,000, just about exactly, in ARPA money that we have not allocated.
Yep.
That's all I got, just as I was. Okay, I gather, anything else, Mike?
No, not on the ARPA, or on the sidewalks. Well, we didn't really get deep into the, my report.
We haven't called a question yet.
No, we gotta call the questions, the question's on the table.
And Mr. Steele has a question or a comment before we get to that.
I just have a question on the sidewalk thing. Have you gone over the plans with everybody that owns property along where the sidewalk's going? Because just looking so you don't run into problems and blindside like you did on the other projects.
So, they did?
Looking like Castleton Cares will probably lose, or not Castleton, the senior center will probably lose one driveway, would be my guess, and it looks like Mike Holden's gonna lose his parking in front of his place.
Mike Holden's gonna lose his parking, not happy about it, but he built in the right-of-way.
Yeah.
In the state's right-of-way.
Yeah.
Not even in the town's right-of-way.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but I talked to Teresa Gilman about the senior center, and I'm not sure if they're gonna lose both of that, their driveways, it doesn't sound like they would.
Because I know the other projects, everybody that had two driveways lost one.
Yep. And it had something to do with deliveries, I believe, is what they come, what it come down to. So.
Okay.
But yeah, I know.
Everybody was aware of what was going on.
Unless they've changed hands, and that's something that the MPM, the municipal project manager would go door-to-door and talk to people about.
Because when they came through my area, I didn't have any clue that they were taking a bunch of my stuff and changing it up, you know, until they started digging.
Yeah, we started, we learned a lot about state right-of-ways, and that they don't have an enforcement part, division, or office, so they use these projects as their means to grab things, like a sign that's in the right-of-way, they won't come to you and say, "Remove it." But as soon as these projects go through, and they start using the developer, or the contractor, the engineer and stuff, that's gotta be removed. So, yes, we had lots of pleasant experiences, and you were one of the ones that had that pleasant experience with stuff that's in the right-of-way, and drainage.
Yeah, just one thing, a comment for Rob. We learned a lot on that first project. It was a town, as you know, there was a lot of hiccups there, we learned a lot. And the second project going from Creek Road up to here was a lot less, what do you wanna call it? A lot less, there was less problems.
Yeah. Castle Corners was the only problem I had.
We're thinking, we've already addressed all the potential problems we think will happen on the third project, so hopefully by the time we get to the fifth one, we'll be good at it. Anything else? That's all I got. Call the question, I believe it is to spend the 239 as presented, both sidewalk projects. Any other discussion of that? If not, all of the favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, board.
Move on, Mike? That was a sigh, can you hear that sigh?
Mr. Town Manager?
Mr. Spalding?
I don't wanna be talking about this Parsons Hill sidewalk a year from now.
Yeah, I don't either, Bob.
Okay.
Believe me.
Do you really wanna get that built later?
Yes, yes, I want it to be under construction.
I'm really sorry, I know I'm digressing, I'm really kinda sad that Mickey was not here to see that built.
I know.
Are you getting your shovel out to handle that, Mike?
If you want me to build it, you'll get exactly what I, the skill set I have.
You build it, they shall come.
We talked about the tandem dump truck. I don't know if you have any questions, the fire station, I talked to Mickey Friday, and he's gonna be back this week to finish sanding, and I'm gonna have to hire somebody out, like Aaron Kang, to do the painting. And I'm gonna actually put out an RFP on painting for this building here, because if you look around, it's starting to really get pretty scarred up, and finish the, some of the walls at the town office. You're aware, I believe I shared with you via email, the copy of the application that was sent in for the Assistance to Firefighters grant. So that has been submitted. And I, to be a good, just so you know, if they award this, it's gonna be probably close to a year and a half to two years before they're in new gear, because it has to go through the approval process, and that's gonna be into like November, and then, then you gotta go through the sizing, and these chiefs had problems with timeframes of getting gear, especially post-COVID. So it could take, it could take a year and a half or so to get. Um, so it could take, it could take a year and a half or so to get that money executed into where somebody's standing in a new set of gear. Um, we, under the ARPA stuff was the, the truck, um, for replacing the van and the brush truck with a quad cap pickup, UTV enclosed trailer and wildland skid unit for the, that goes in the back of the, uh, the UTV and the pickup. Still, that's still on the, that's still on the plate or on that list of ARPA funding. Um, I did get an update from Chief Goyette. Looks like March is when the new truck will arrive for Forest Grove Fire Department. And then they'll be able to release that, the truck we bought, that 2001 Sukin, uh, platform, to be released to go to Harab to get the upgrades on that or fit the repairs done and painting and everything. And at that time, Chief Goyette will drive out Engine Two fully unloaded, so it's light as possible, drive that out to, uh, Syracuse, to Harab's as part of that trade-in for that work. So March is what they're, they're expecting to get their new truck.
So we're looking at the new ladder here in April or May?
Probably, I'd say May timeframe. And they, they're applying for a grant, the passive scholarship to hire a company to do training on the new ladder truck with the members, because it's, they should be doing that on new pieces of equipment. So hopefully that works our advantage, uh, to get that. We used it, last time we did, we got that grant, we used it for training on the ladder truck, the, the old one. Stormwater runoff, um, I'm not sure if there's any, if you have any questions on that one, I'm on page 14. This thing with the, uh, East and West Crystal Haven, so Hillary, I talked to her, um, she wants to bring Zapata Courage down from Agency of Natural Resources and a stormwater engineer to look at that place. What, what we've discovered, discovery learning, I guess, um, the ground, that's a high groundwater table there. We dug down three feet on East Crystal Haven, we started hitting water. Went down four feet, started more, by five feet was gushing in there. So the, those breaks that are in those sewer lines, that's where we're finding the, the stormwater or the groundwater is being infiltrated into our sewer collection system. And when it's pulling water and it's pulling in rocks and the silt and everything else, so, um, there's a groundwater issue up there, and I'm not sure if that's going to be easily solved. But we agreed not to pave the road because of those problems. But this problem with, um, water runoff across private property into the lake, I'm not going to say that, I guess I can't predict an outcome, but talking to Hillary, uh, I think that you're getting A and R, the water's got to go somewhere. And it's already been discharged at a, from a certain location that the Kearns family, uh, their, their site, we, we can replace the line, the broken line, which we should replace that broken line, but it may not change the fact that water's being discharged there. Don't know yet, but I, but I'm, I'm bracing for that one because it's not going to be probably pretty. Probably going to be like giving the cat a bath. So, um, just got to keep pushing on that one to get somebody in there to look at it.
Rob, you have a question for Mike?
Yeah, I don't know if you checked into it, but I took a certification class on shoreline management, and one of the things that they touched on was that there's a ton of grant money available right now to try to aid in runoff into the lakes. So that might be something worth looking into if you guys are trying to fund a project down there.
We are, uh, that's what Hillary's helping us with, she's the, she knows, she can sniff out any
Yeah.
grant out there, so
Yeah.
that's what we're hoping for. Yeah, this is, this is a big, this can be a big problem. The Board approved a purchase order on trees on Main Street with $6,700. Well, there's one of those trust but verify moments. I, I looked at that, I'm like, I can't believe two trees are going to cost $6,700. So I drove Main Street and I looked for that big cottonwood. That cottonwood is so far off Main Street that I need binoculars to see it. So I'm, that's, I took off the list, I said, nope. It's, it is over 50 feet from the center line of that road, it's about 75 feet. So it's not a public safety issue. It's not in the right-of-way where it's going to fall on a motorist or pedestrian. So what I said is now it's my, I get the dirty end of the stick. I got to go and talk to the homeowner and say, this was a, this was authorized mistakenly. And so I told, uh, Tom Johnson to pull that off the list and pull that Basswood tree in front of the post office off the list, we're going to drop that ourselves. And that, that $6,700, we'll come back to the Board with other needs that we have that are real needs, not a cottonwood tree that's 75 feet from the center line.
Thank you.
So.
Mike, Mike, when, do you know when they're going to get started?
On what?
On the trees, are they started already?
No, we talked to Tom, he, we told him, don't do it.
Nope.
Oh, your $32,000 one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I haven't got a timeline on that one. Jeff was dealing with them, so I don't know.
Oh, okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah, as far as the, when you guys approved for clearing the roads?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Jeff was working with that, I don't know what the timeline is.
Okay.
Whatever it is, probably add a month.
I know they wanted to do it before they started budging out or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so I apologize, I don't know what they've talked about as far as the timeline goes.
That's all.
And they think that is the end of that. Oh, Roustabout, I'm sorry, I looked at, I did, I just hired, the Roustabout was Eric, the guy that was filling in part-time up there. So he, he had his physical, you know, did all the urinalysis, all that stuff. His, his start date's March 5th. Um, and he does not have a CDL, but he's agreed to go to the class, um, for his CDL. And then I gave a conditional letter of hire to a Fairhaven resident for the Highway Department. 22 years old, um, travels all the way to Williston right now to work, hasn't missed a day of work. They like him, I'm not surprised if, if he comes back to me, because he was given, he was going to talk to him today about his notice. They may say, I'll give you X amount of money, they might want to keep him. Don't know yet, um, but his, he would give his notice, two weeks' notice. He also does not have a CDL but wants one, he said he'd go to the class. So I think that he's going to be a good hire. Getting a little youth involved and succession planning as far as, you know, we got two, two folks that are longer in the tooth and may not be around here for another 10, in 10 years. So, um, if everything works out, we could have, we'll have two new hires. Um, and I hired a guy named Joa, John, uh, as a, in the part-time slot at the Highway Department. And he's, his physical was today, so we'll find out how that turns out. But we'll, we should be getting some enough, enough personnel now to help us get through these little things that we don't seem to ever get to, like roadside mowing and cleaning bridges and weed whacking and that kind of stuff, so.
We still have March ahead of us, uh, but how is our salt and sand holding up?
Um, that's, that part of that, the answer's good, um, I don't know how good yet. The pile's not real low, uh, either one of them. But that salt and, that snow and ice control, uh, policy that I wanted to have here, that, that does address that and the reporting of it, and that's another thing Brightly will help us with. So I'll have more information to share with you at the next meeting on that, about where we're at with it, but why, why this, you'll see then the ice and snow control policy, um, where that's all included. But that's the bare, clean roads, not bare roads. Vermont doesn't have a bare roads policy, they have a clean roads policy, which
Yeah.
which also means, um, if it's snowing, I'll slow down dummy.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that's, that, it's all in that policy, and it also includes something that might be near and dear to your heart, and that's the use of chlorides, um, near watershed areas, so. That, I'll have that before the Select Board, um, next meeting. And I guess that'd be it, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for Mike? If you have an offer, yeah. If not, move on to the purpose orders for approval, we have one for North Star Fireworks. Make a motion, we approve purpose order number 051756 to North Star Fireworks for the deposit for the July 6 fireworks for $6,250.
Second.
The second, any discussion? Saying no, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Now, we'll move on to warrants. Make a motion, we approve the following warrants. Warrant 0215 for $5,855.68. Warrant 0222 for $40,621 and no cents. Warrant 0226 for $41,804.10. Warrant 0215P for $16,788.16. And warrant 0222P for $17,682.59.
I'll second.
And a second discussion, on me. Saying no, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carried.
I'd make a motion that we approve the following warrants. 0131 for $303.10. 0209 for $64.85. And 0222C for $31.67.
Second. I'll second.
The second. I'll recuse myself. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Next one. Make a motion, we approve warrant number 0222N.
For the dollar mill?
Dollar mill, oh, dollar mill, okay. $600 or $969.67.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I recuse myself.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Make a motion, we approve warrant number 02228 for $969.67.
I'll second it.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Recuse myself.
Aye.
Make a motion, we approve warrant number 0222S for $969.67.
Second.
The second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 I'll recuse myself from that one.
All your sign. Allison, did you catch all the, uh, stuff on the warrants?
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, kind sir.
There should be more than that.
They're coming.
Oh, okay.
There's more, there's more coming.
Sorry.
Burgess Cramp.
Let's start going.
Okay.
Allison? Hey Allison, can you see both camera views?
I can see the boards and then in another little screen, I have Booth and the Islands.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Those two, Dick doesn't have to sign.
Okay, you don't have to sign with it.
There's another one right there. They're coming, they're coming, Nick.
Okay. Moving on, Select Board comments and/or concerns, I have one. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Joe Mark. Over his five years of service on the Board, Joe is always thoughtful, makes decisions in the best interest of the town, and try to keep us on the straight and narrow path as the Parliamentary. Joe?
Thank you, Joe.
Really appreciate what you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe, I appreciate that.
Other comments or concerns? No.
I, I actually had a flag flown over the Capitol Building for Mr. Mark and he took it. Karen, Karen, they come in, Karen's like, what are these for? Oh, Joe Mark's name's on it. Hey Joe, come and pick up a flag, he didn't, she didn't know what it was, and I'm like, I need that back. So I, I have a display case that, so I can, we can present it to him officially, um, with a, with a certificate in it, but, yes.
And I'd be willing to trade you mine for your, the town's old one, if you'd like.
Okay. Sure.
All right?
Yeah.
I think it'll get
Other comments?
Better use.
Okay.
You all set, Mike? You all set with that or?
Yeah, but thank you.
Yeah.
Are we having a party?
A party?
A long away party?
Please, no.
You said it with a smile.
I, I have two quick things, Jim. The, uh, I think in the past, as I recall, we've always at one of our last meetings before Town Meeting Day, discussed our plan for presenting articles to the public. And I don't think we'll have time to do that since we haven't done it tonight. How shall we proceed on that? Do you want to assign articles to us?
I'll refer that to the Town Manager.
And, because we talked about it earlier, and I didn't know if anybody, and make sure everybody was going to be here, but I can send that out. Now that I know everybody's going to be here, I can send that out by email and just give Jim. I can print out a copy for you, like I'd normally done highlight the ones that you had, um, and then, um, send out it by email as well. Is there anything that people want to, should be recused, or you want to stay away from, like usually a library you stay away from?
Yeah, I would stay away from that. Well, relatedly, uh, what will, what will, what supplemental handouts will be available that night?
All the rev, so we're putting together the revenues, uh, showing last year's information, uh, our projected revenues, but anything that has a revenue attached to it, a department, um, will be included in that. But it's going to be even a little more comprehensive, because it's going to be all of our revenue, our projected revenues and, or what we got last year and what we're projecting. Like pilot monies in there, if that's 400 and something thousand dollars, people don't even know that we get, um, for, for state lands, so.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds good.
And the question, there's a follow-up that didn't, weren't we committed to providing a handout with the, um, this year's budget and last year's budget, since we didn't include that in the warning and on ballot?
That is, that's in there, um, Joe's already got that one done. So, yeah, it'll be a two-page or two-sided handout, that'll have the budget information and has a revenue. We're going to have copies of the town reports there. We're in Herrick Auditorium in the Stafford Building, we're not in the Jeffords Building. It's a smaller, it's 80 capacity, 80, you know, seats plus an additional 20 in folding chairs. But that's where they moved us there this year, that other one wasn't available. So we did walk-through with it, um, they're going to provide the Zoom component, um, they're going to provide all the hardware, that, everything we need to run it. It's going to be cozy, um, because the, down in the base of the auditorium where the It's gonna be cozy because the, down in the base of the auditorium where the tables normally set up, it's not as big as in Jeffords, the auditorium in Jeffords, so it's a little more cozy, but it'll fit. There's a plate, there's a podium for the moderator, the police chief and Cy can sit out to the side, there's enough room, but it's just smaller, so.
Where is that? Where's that building?
If you were to, the building directly, where the library is, the building directly behind Jeffords, so if you're looking at Jeffords, we're gonna, we're gonna put a map out on, on the website and let people know where it's at. And we'll put signs at the building. But basically, if you're looking at Jeffords from the road, it's the building directly behind it and there's like a, and there's an entrance and it has Stafford and it's sort of...
A courtyard separating the two.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I had one other small comment, and that is that the, the lighting out here remains dim.
They, I, I talked to Erica and she said basically they've done what they can to keep that from not shining in people's faces and not being in the middle of Route 30.
Darn.
And I called up the one in the corners, that their lighting at the corners, one of them was out, and I found out that it's not, doesn't belong to Green Mountain Power, it belongs to V-Trans.
Have we ever asked the medical center to upgrade the lighting on their sign?
We did. When you first brought it up, we talked about their, to their, what's it called, office manager, but I had to, I had to go back and reengage because I don't remember what they said about it.
You can waive the town report with their photograph on it.
I could contact them again.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Mary Lee?
I'm fine.
Bob?
I still have a concern, Mike, of us taking our C and D to the Gleason Road Transfer Station. Every box we take, it's, I know it's costing us $120 to $160 extra for the box. I know it's closer than going down to Gansville, but what I ask, what I ask you to, is would you call the Hubbard Brothers personally and see if they can give us a better price? The truck wouldn't have to go through City of Rutland, way the other side of City of Rutland. That's, that, that's a major thing.
Yeah.
And I, I understand it's, I'm sure it's more expensive to run all the way down to Gansville.
It's not. It's not less expensive to go down there. It's the top, we're blowing tires like crazy.
That's what I mean. I'm, I'm sure it's more, it's more expensive to run all, it, it takes longer to go to Gansville than it does to go to Gleason Road. I do understand that, so it may not be $120, $160 savings by taking it down to Gansville. I don't know.
No, we did the analysis on it and it's, it's cheaper on, on face value when we figure in fuel, time, wear and tear, that kind of stuff in the, in the per-ton price. It's a lot cheaper, but the...
With the extra miles and paying your extra, is it really?
It is cheaper, but the problem is they, they were, they had, we had more, more breakdowns down at that place because they were, box springs were getting wound up. They spent two days down there with the truck on cutting out an old box spring out of the, out of the driveshaft. And they popped tires because you drive up on that pile and anything is in there. So, we, we were spending $400 a tire and Evan was telling me about it, he's like, it's, it is cheaper. I mean, face value, it is cheaper, like costs per-ton wise and, and time, but we're just, we're spending money on our equipment, too.
Would you just check with Hubbard Brothers?
I will.
I know they, they take our, our demo from Sam's.
I will. I probably don't...
Pretty good deal.
I don't want to air dirty laundry about a business in front, in general public right now, but I would, I'll talk to you offline about that facility. We had a lot of problems with them.
O, o, over here? Oh, okay. Okay, sure. It just, it would keep us from going through the city and it's right off the interstate, right there. We don't have no problems there, so.
I, I can share with you what...
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Anything else, Bob?
No.
That's it.
Just one thing, Bob. We're gonna have at least one different member on the Board right after Town Meeting Day. And it came up last year and perhaps years before, do we want to have an organizational meeting between Town Meeting Day and our first regularly scheduled Select Board meeting to organize the Board and take care of the housekeeping, like we have to reapprove the rules of procedure and the conflict of interest policy, et cetera? Do we want to have a special meeting on Wednesday or Thursday of the week prior to that, or we want to do that at the beginning of the first Select Board meeting?
I think we should do it at the beginning of the first Select Board meeting.
Like we always have.
Well, I brought that up because I think it was you, Mary Lee, that brought up that the first meeting that someone's new to the Board, they're asked to vote on things that they may not know about. So, it was brought up, I thought you brought it up, saying we, we should do it differently because that way the new person that comes onto the Board has a chance to get their, their packets and look at something before they see it the very first time at that meeting. So, that's why I brought it up, that's all.
I'm not emotionally attached to either way. I just thought that I should throw that out there and let the Board see.
Well, I guess what I'm thinking now is if Jim gets beat, we'll have two new ones. If Jim stays, we'll have one new one. But both of them are quite, they're up on what's going on in the town.
I would agree with that.
And they've been attending meetings, which is nice.
What do you think, guys?
And I think both of those gentlemen, one of those gentlemen will be on the Board next, in two weeks' time. We don't know which one, but one of them will be, at minimum. And I think both of them are astute enough to ask questions if they don't understand they're gonna go get the answer, right?
Yeah. Like ARPA, I mean, if we, if, if ARPA was on the next meeting and they're, they weren't part of it, I, I don't care either way. I'm, I just, I didn't remember you saying that, so I just wanted to bring it up to you to say, do you want to do that or not? It doesn't matter to me either way.